Four second sleep.
My computer says eleven all three.
Oh, well, that's even worse.
But everyone else's computer says something different.
All right, I'm just, um, please, roll call.
Trustee Braden?
Here.
Trustee Lemon?
Yeah.
Trustee Mergot?
Here.
Trustee McCarthy?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Trustee Whitmore?
Here.
Mayor Burrow?
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge of allegiance to tonight's own nation be led by Pastor Ken Langley with Christ Community Church.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the invitation, Ms. Bowden. I want to start by thanking you for the public servants in this room and then ask you to help them to be just that, servants whose investment of time and energy serves well this community. If they lack wisdom or knowledge, I pray that you grant them those things. If they are feeling ill or weak, strengthen them. For those who might from time to time be in danger, I ask for protection. If they are weary of well doing, help them to keep on keeping on. If they should be tempted to do less than their best or tempted by sloth or pride or dishonesty or any of the vices to which we human beings are so capable of falling into, then would you reawaken in them a sense of civic and moral duty? And if they are discouraged because the task is difficult or because they're underappreciated or misrepresented, then would you encourage them and give them even joy in their work? I ask these things for the sake of the health of our community and I ask these things in the name of the one perfect servant king who one day will rule and govern perfectly. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three special board meeting minutes.
Um, sorry.
Any discussion on that? Item, roll call, please.
Braden?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Mayor Bowden?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to mayor's report. I need a motion to approve the Salvation Army's request to have the annual red cattle campaign Monday through Saturday, November first through November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Um.
Discussion on that. All right, roll call.
Braden?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Mayor Bowden?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Couple other things in the mayor's report. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Venetian night down at the marina. It was spectacular, best, nice breeze coming off of the lake. It was awesome. Fireworks are great, very well attended. I want to, I did see David over at Touch a Truck. I gave him my, you know, great job. He was grateful that a lot of the folks participated in Venetian night this year. So play even better next year. And Touch a Truck went off really well. The best part of Touch a Truck was I got to walk up the ladder, boom, all the way to the top.
Really?
I had to ask first if I could and Dave, of course, said, you're covered under the insurance. So they put a helmet on me, they put a belt on me and up I went.
Wow.
It was great. You're not afraid of heights, Mayor, I said, nope, not afraid of heights. It was great, had a good, great time, all the entries, everybody that was there, it was a perfect day. And then that last item, the Village of Winter Harbor will be doing Rumble in the Harbor this Saturday, August nineteenth, Saturday night. Check out the website for tickets, www.rummelinthharbor.com. It's going to be a great event, something new that we've never done before and a wrestling event right here at the Schlier Building. So please get your tickets and come out. Am I getting in the ring? There's no way I'm getting in the ring, so. But it's going to be fun, it's going to be something new, so. So that's all I have, so I'll move on to the village administration's report. I have no report tonight. Do you have none? All right. Parks forefounding?
I have none.
All right. So new business, administration and community development committee, trustee McCarthy. All right.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant, twenty-twenty-three dash five, the amount of five hundred seventeen thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Braden?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Mayor Bowden?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move to set aside the rules of the president and board trustees to waive the first and second briefings, an ordinance annexing property located at four three zero three two North Fosland Avenue.
Second discussion on this.
Can you explain it just a little bit, just like, I was trying to, it's just, I'm sorry for the late jump in too. No, that's okay. Just the location of the property, I just got a little confused with the addresses and their location and.
Right, this is located over off, near Fifth Street.
Right.
Way out west on the other side of Lewis Avenue. And this property is surrounded by Winter Harbor, actually on all sides, and I don't know why it was never annexed, but wasn't. So it's, they've just, what they're asking for, the property owners have asked to become part of the village and they've accepted, they're not, they don't have any development plans or anything for it right away, they don't, they're not asking for any zoning relief or other things. So they're, they're accepting, they come in automatically, it's R two, and that's, that's about all you got to say.
So in, in our package, there was a, a large list of addresses that were not close to those residents, so that, I think that's what threw me, that they were more on Washington and, and so, I just got confused.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a rather large parcel that has a number of properties nearby that are bought in.
So you have you.
That's a little making her great interest.
Right, correct.
Right.
There was a little, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because the property that's.
These folks back, it backs onto these folks backyard.
So it does touch all of us?
No, that's, that's my neighborhood, so it just touches the actual neighborhood itself, it doesn't touch all of those properties.
So these properties are over by hers, right over here, but the other one is way on the other side over by where you explained, so.
They didn't compile the list, so I can't, it carries me that it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood. I mean, and places, of course, isn't a problem, I just.
Well, the notice was supposed to go to two different groups of people, maybe mixing that up. One is the notice goes to the abiding and adjoining landowners, but it also gets delivered to the township trustees, the library district trustees and some other folks that don't have, that don't live anywhere near this. So that, that may be part of the configuration.
Yeah, there's, there was definitely a little confusion.
They're all for on, you call it Washington.
No North Prairie, because the abiding properties are North Prairie. And there's none showing that.
This is, this one, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when these properties are on the western way over here, of course.
Yeah.
And that's North Prairie, right? Or Prairie.
Like the southern, isn't it?
Yeah, correct. So, so that.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now I understand. That's an interesting question.
Good, you're right, I like you.
If Sanjay was here, we could answer that question and see what.
Let me see if I can get him.
Oh, there he is. I bet you we're off today for seven years, I'm sorry. I got up at four o'clock this morning to go to Chicago. A little fuzzy. Did we send notice to the adjoining and abiding landlords? Because that's not what this form does require.
Yes, we did, and I do have copies of these certified mail receipts to those persons, which were provided, were sent out by Julie and Ness.
And this exhibit A is, does that have the correct legal address of the property?
Yes, it does.
And that's, and that explains what happened. This, this was a basic form that was used a number of years ago when we're on a space that's annexed. That's where, that's where these addresses come from.
That's what I figured, just using it as a sample to put on.
Apparently it was a cut and paste error or anything, creation of the document. But it's all valid as long as the actual, the, the property.
The, the, right, the property. It's an extra, it doesn't. What we damage.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right.
Good question.
Thank you.
Yeah, they can trust you, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other comments to the.
White, the light. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what's the cut and paste error here?
The.
In the exhibit A?
A number of additional people were given notices erroneously.
Which doesn't hurt, it's just, it's extra.
You asked that, but I heard a number of people that are adjoining and abiding properties, and you can notify the rest of the world.
You made that catch, not you know.
As long as we nail the, the correct things, we're, we're covered. If we add it anymore, it's just a bonus, it'll cost us money.
Right, it's not, it's not bad thing, I just didn't, I didn't see the proper addresses on there, which confused me, so.
So the descriptions of the particles are accurate?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm in the form.
Yeah. What we believe.
About having these legal, the correct legal sitting to fund, it's not terribly easy to tell me exactly what it is, I can't just read through it and guess, since it's a meat and bone description that's about two hundred quarts long.
Yeah, okay, I'm.
Chris.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Braden?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Mayor Bowden?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have an overview presentation of ours fuel project, so Sheridan Road and First Street. I'm going to defer to David.
And I'm for it too.
I wasn't sure.
Kurt, I figured it'd be better to give the current problem.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the board. My name's Kurt Bowman, I'm with Backstreet Movie Consulting Engineers, we've been the village's consultant for more than a decade, maybe two decades, something like that. And I was asked to come tonight and discuss with you this proposed development up on First Street and Sheridan on the Los Angeles side. Got a brief present there, a brief discussion here and some points I wanted to present. I'm going to start kind of with a general overview of the development process. Many of you are probably familiar with it, but to those that may have questions, hope they'll answer or feel free to ask, you know, if something isn't going. And then the second part, I wanted to shift into this specific project and the process there, things to think about and possible action items for the board and the village. So, um, from a general standpoint, commercial development is often looked upon as favorably by the village. It's a sign of a vibrant community when there's commercial development going on, sort of the lifeblood of the community, if you will. But it's got to be done responsibly, right? You don't want something that's not going to work out in the community, and there are different things to look at, different points, and as a municipal engineer, I can help with some of those, that's kind of why I got tasked here with doing this tonight. Development regulations are often spelled out explicitly in the village code, either in your zoning ordinances, your subdivision code, your other billing regulations. And folks that want to develop in the village, that's public knowledge, they can go online and look at it. But sometimes there are things that don't quite fit, you know, that, that either variances have to be granted, they have to be considered by a planning commission, your zoning board, and special use permits have to be issued, things like that. So if a development, if somebody wants to build something on a lot that's zoned properly for what they want to do, you know, you guys have your zoning map, we update that periodically. So you can look and see, you know, am I in a commercial district, am I in a residential district, and then go to those specific regulations and you can tell kind of what you can build there by right, they call it. You don't need any kind of special approvals from the board, you don't need any variances on anything, it's permitted by right, is what they call it. But then we've also got these other uses, which is what this proposed gas station up at First and Sheridan fits in. And I realize we're talking about the Village of Pleasant Prairie, but the process is similar. If this developer were coming in and it was something on the south side of First Street, we'd be going through the same process, talking about the same things. So it's a little bit unique that we're talking to an adjacent municipality about the development they want, but it's the same points that we would look at either way. So, um, there is a formal process, I mentioned, you know, if there's special considerations that have to give and variances, things like that, there's a public hearing process, you guys are probably familiar with that. The public is invited to provide input, what do the neighbors think, what do people in the village think? And that is all information that's presented to, you know, the planning and zoning board and then ultimately to board of trustees, you folks. Your job then is to weigh those advantages and disadvantages. You know, is this a service that's going to be beneficial to the residents? Maybe it's not one hundred percent advantageous, but if, if there's offsetting points, you weigh those good points and bad points and you decide whether it's something the village wants to approve. Again, this is something that may require special use permits, zoning variances, things of that nature. Permitted by right, all they need to do is apply for a building permit and they're off to the races, but you know, if there's discussion points. And I wanted to get into some of those, because gas stations are definitely in there. And I've been involved in a number of gas station reviews, approvals in other municipalities in Lake County. So I can talk a little bit about the common concerns that come up and things that need to be discussed. So I'm looking, yeah, I wanted to shift into this specific project now and talk about it. They do have a public hearing coming up next Monday at five o'clock. I'm not able to attend, I've got a prior commitment there, but I would encourage you, if you've got questions, if you want to voice your concerns, absolutely, I would encourage you to go to that public hearing, it may be heard. I did prepare a memo for that, the purpose of that public hearing, and I understand it's in your packets, if you've had to go through it, I would just kind of walk through that now. I mean, the big, the big items, you can probably guess, traffic is going to be a concern, right? Stormwater is often a concern. Environmental regulations, we don't want to get a mess up there. Lighting is another big, can be another big concern. You don't want something that's going to light the place up and, you know, it looks like Kearney Mall or something like that, right? Noise, another, another factor to consider, and then aesthetics, what's it going to look like? You know, landscaping is fairly cheap. It's, it's much nicer to be looking at trees, shrubs, bushes appropriately planted than, you know, a bunch of gas, I don't, I don't know how many fueling stations there are, fourteen, sixteen, whatever it is. I'd rather, I presume you folks would too, rather look at something that's bushes than staring at gas pumps, right? So these, these.
So you, you realize this property is, it's like on a reserve that they, they have designated as a wetlands or a preservation, so I'm sure they're well aware of that. It's way off the beaten path. There's one house, I believe in Pleasant Prairie there, and it's a couple businesses.
Yes.
And the red light part is going to greatly increase what we want to do, because the traffic up there is horrible with the gas station that's there now. So I believe it's all flusses for this project to go through, that's just my opinion, so.
Sure.
And all the looks part, I mean, do we really get to weigh in what they want to do if it, if it isn't against the law and it's against, it's across the border, we can't really do anything about it. It's just my opinion, and I'm just wondering why we're going in depth on this one, it's very little we can do about it, other than hope that they put in the red lights and they take care of them and they do all that part, that's all.
I don't think we can influence the process.
Okay.
Um, you bring up some good points, yes, environmental, boy, they had a wetland delay, we've seen a number of documents from this development, the Village of Pleasant Prairie shared with us, we've gone through in detail. There is, there are wetlands on site and those are all going to be dedicated to that preserve to the east, and I forget the name of it, David, on the sidewalk, yeah, yeah, yeah. So they're, they're maintaining all of those, protecting all of those, you know, so that's, that's a good thing. But we have met with Village of Pleasant Prairie, they invited us in, we've had several meetings with them, and they're listening to us, which is great. We do have some leverage, I mean, First Street is half-owned by Winter Harbor, okay? So there is some leverage that can be applied there, but there's also the good neighbor policy, good governance policy, and I'm glad they're listening to us and we're trying to bring up things that we think would be concerns, and so far, I think they're listening. So, um, jumping into those items, one of the things they're going to have is car wash, just coming off the memo now, the car wash. Car washes are good, but they can be really noisy. And it's good to have a buffer around there, and it's also good to limit the hours, you don't want somebody going in at two AM to wash their car. And I'm not suggesting that that was the hours of operation, but from our perspective, we thought it'd be reasonable to limit those hours from seven AM to nine AM. I think, according to my notes here, Village Pleasant Prairie was going to, or either Pleasant Prairie is going to allow or the builder was going to request five AM to midnight. I don't want to hear a car wash going on at five AM or, you know, if I'm entertaining friends, you know, on my back porch at ten o'clock, I don't want to be listening to a car wash going on. And I don't think there's a real demand for that service at that time, so I don't think that's unreasonable. We suggest a limiting from seven to nine, things like that, you know? And again, they've been listening. Outdoor music and advertising, I don't know when last night you folks went to a gas station, you show up and there's a, there's a motion sensor there, you pull out the pump handle and all of a sudden the advertising is hitting you, right? Or the music is playing, or whatever it is. Maybe the, the gas station wants that, maybe it increases sales, but it's noise and if it's not necessary, you know, do we, so that's something we ask them to consider, no outdoor, you need the speaker to go, yeah, go ahead on pump twelve or whatever, but we don't like advertising playing. Delivery hours, general delivery hours, whether it's fuel or, you know, materials for the convenience store, delivery hours should be from seven to seven, Monday through Friday, I think that's reasonable. Some other things, just trying to hit the high points here. Truck traffic is prohibited on First Street, it's signed right now, and we want to emphasize that. Trucks will beat up that road real quick, it's just not residential, residential use now, so cars. Trucks do a tremendous amount of wear and tear on pavements like that, and trucks could be going in there, your fuel truck could be going, fully loaded, fuel truck could be going in there, excuse me. So right now, it's signed for trucks prohibited. We've, we've taken the stance that we don't want deliveries down that road, because that's side, you know, going eastbound, that's the side that's in the Village of Winter Harbor. So we're going to try and get them to do all their access for, for deliveries and such off of Sheridan Road, State Highway, if they call it. They are, the developers planning on completely rebuilding First Street, at least due to the length of their property, even the portion in Winter Harbor, which is good, full debt asphalt, that's what your payment management report called for, and they're going to widen it a little bit to twenty-four feet to make sure it's safe through a little bit more traffic, all reasonable things, and we concur with that, we recommend that.
If they, sorry to interrupt you, but if, if they do rebuild it, then can't they say, we're going to build this to support the way that the vehicles, or, or is that, I mean, if they're putting the money in to build such road, can't they say, well, we engineered this road to withstand this?
But then the trucks can't get off that road, I mean, none of the streets that they would have to turn down to get off of First Street.
They're just falling right into the gas station.
They're proposing driveway off of First.
Yeah, it's falling right out the re, right out the redone road into their parking lot.
Yeah, but if you have just that one section, if they're going to pay for it, but then have a no turn sign for truck, you know, no trucks permitted upon, you know, after this point.
He's saying, he's totally, he's saying, we're saying we don't want it at all, I'm saying, can they rebut it and say, if we are rebuilding such road, can we have it for that little portion? Or are we going in and saying, no, you can't have it at all, you got to enter from your share.
You should absolutely tell them, if you're going to be doing this road, it has to be built for trucks, because I'm going to tell you, they can say, hey, deliveries have to be done off Sheridan, you're going to have new drivers, you're going to have a hundred different reasons why they won't be going off of that.
Then we can ticket them and gain that money back. I'm just saying, if, but my whole question was, if we're not going to let them go on there, but they rebuild this road, do we have a leg to stand on to say, we don't want this on there even though you rebuilt the road?
To this, to this point, again, great points, to, to this time, these are recommendations, and it's going to come down to a negotiation, they may, they may well say that, okay, we're going to put in a, 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 you know, full thick pavement to support the trucks, and then the village will decide, well, okay, what are we going to do here, are we going to be okay with that? What we didn't want to do was create a, a enforcement issue where we're looking the other way, yeah, it's posted, no trucks, then people start complaining, the road gets deep down, and all of a sudden your police force is, is, you know, over there trying to watch for abuse or, or violators. So we wanted to bring this up in front, and that's, so that's the reason for doing so.
If I can add something here, Kurt, you know, one of the, one of the issues here, and we've had really extensive, and these same discussions with the village and the village manager, administrator, G Harris, and their engineers and their planners and all the rest of them. This gas station requires a special use permit that they give, which is something we don't do very much, we, our special uses are pretty limited down here, they use them extensively throughout Pleasant Prairie, and they, and they enforce the covenants that they set forth, and we've asked for these things. One of the issues that makes this more complicated on its face is not only the fact that it's in, it's in Wisconsin and we're in Illinois, which is one issue, but there are actually four jurisdictions that are involved here. There's the county, because Russell Road last is, is county jurisdiction, Sheridan Road is, and IDOT are involved, Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Pleasant Prairie, and finally us. So trying to get all of these different pieces fitting together with the stoplight that ultimately their IDOT and YDOT have approved and are in the process of completing their, their approval processes to get that done, means that, you know, they, I think the, all of the indications so far have been that the Pleasant Prairie is part of the special use permit, it's going to require the deliveries come on the north side and on the west side of the property off Sheridan Road, because that's part of their, part of their improvement that they have to make there as well. So I, I think that you're going to see, and, and the one thing I will say is Pleasant Prairie has been extraordinarily cooperative throughout this process, inviting us up for their meetings, sharing all their drawings with us and concept plans, taking seriously all of our considerations and everything we've had to offer. And it, it's painful to us to watch, you know, a commercial development come in that's going to be competitive with our own business, but that's the nature of, of what we can do, and we don't have that jurisdiction to deal with in Wisconsin. That's also why the next item on the, on the agenda that's coming down may be the, the intergovernmental agreement that deals with some of the, some of the issues that you're talking about, you know, the ultimate responsibility for who has to pay for the improvements to First Street in the future.
Thank you. Continuing on with, with just points of, of discussion, we did talk about the traffic signal, and yes, IDOT's going to approve it, Lake County has pretty much waived, said whatever IDOT and WISDOT approve is, is good for them. But we do want, and that signal will be maintained by others, it's not going to be a cost to the village.
Will it be OptiCom, I know, emergency vehicles?
We've discussed that internally, the village does not now have OptiCom on capabilities, emergency vehicle preemption on your current signals, so it would be a tough ask to say, hey, we want it there. Not only that, but if you did want it, the village that requests it would like to pay and obtain for it. You know, if it was in the long range plan to put preemption on the signals on Sheridan, we could certainly bump that up right now, but again, the village would like to step up and pay for that. We have not. We have not officially requested for a special preemption.
They do not have it in Village of Pleasant Prairie?
It's our understanding that if they do, it's very funny.
Really? Okay.
They're not going to have it? I think there is intersection, it's all the way up 465 anyway. That's the next traffic light they have. And we don't have it here at Lake Street either, no.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Another point was roadway drainage, stormwater is often a major concern. There is a portion of the site that drains toward, you know, south into Winter Harbor. And we've asked they pay attention to that, apply the same standards that Lake County Stormwater Management Commission would make us apply. A little bit different on the north side of the state line, but you know, it's rules we have to live by, so we've asked they apply those there. And kind of the last major item is lighting, something that I've gotten quite a bit involved in. Gas stations like to just light up everything so that it looks like daylight under that canopy when you're pumping gas at midnight. And that's not necessary. It's considered light pollution. And there's standards out there that we are suggesting be applied to this to be reasonable. Yes, we need safety, we need safe lighting for patrons using the gas station. They feel comfortable, safe when they're pumping gas, you don't want to be pumping gas in the duct. They can see what they're doing. But we don't, I took a look at photometric climate submitted and it was two or three times as bright as similar gas stations that I've been involved in and have permitted in Lake County. So we recommended some standards be applied there and are hoping that they follow through with that. Also maximum pole light, we don't need real high poles, 30, 40 feet up in the air. I don't know what Pleasant Prairie's current standard is, but you know, again, we want to be reasonable with it. So that's kind of where we're at. And those are the highlights of this, I hope there are any questions or?
Just one last point is the curb cut, the existing curb cuts to the property in First Street. They were looking to propose to eliminate that curb cut to our property. And after discussions with the group internally, we thought that it might not be a good idea since we don't have any future plans for that property, we really need to preserve that curb cut into the property.
We asked that that be maintained, exactly.
They wanted to eliminate it and flatten it?
They asked, they said, what do you want to do with that driveway? And again, the property's not being used, so they thought, well, we won't put it back. And those positions, no, you know, we think it's in the best interest, long term, to leave that driveway. If it ever, you know, when it develops, if it's needed, you know, I'm sure there will be permitting requirements there, you know, because Illinois, IDOT, they're going to want to see, you know, what the new use is and traffic density come up and things like that.
All of these points were all collaborated with all the department heads. That's how we came up with, that's how we came up with these points and these suggestions.
Oh, good, very informative, thank you.
Welcome.
Just standing here, yes, is this going to be a 24-hour operation?
Yes.
Okay. That's just, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
No, 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 five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Village Code for Pleasant Prairie.
So the car wash was the same hour as the regular, it was all five?
I knew you had said that.
Okay, five minutes.
Respect the BP request, do we call it, or that's sale?
We're going to rebuild it.
They're talking about them rebuilding, because yeah, you know, they're looking at the new.
Make it a larger two. Make it a larger two.
Of course. Yeah, they don't want to leave that receipt.
Right, right.
Okay. That's all I have.
On the horizon, coming to track.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt.
You're welcome. Thank you.
What day is that meeting, you said Monday?
Monday, Monday night, at 5:00.
What Monday, what day is it?
21st.
21st, right. At what time?
Five.
5:00, is that somewhere right there?
Yes.
Yes.
We have the, we have the public notice, which will help.
And that's at the Village of Pleasant Prairie, they're all, they're a headquarter?
I believe so.
Yeah, the one on 37th Street, Lewis.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in the board room.
All right. I made a motion to approve resolution proposing municipal interstate agreement with the Village of Pleasant Prairie.
Okay. All right, comments, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I made a motion that we approve a request for relief from Municipal Code Section 155.05, permanent fences, specific to 341 Thompson Avenue only.
Okay, discussion on that.
I have a question. Did this, this didn't go through the PCC for variance?
The zoning board does not require.
It doesn't for the fences?
No.
Okay, just checking. I'm good with it either way, I just want you to know that.
No, we talked specifically about the.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments?
I think it's just good that they're being courteous to the neighbors and worrying about the dog. I mean, it's a perfect scenario, it's helping both people, so.
I agree.
It's making a good environment for the dog, it's making it safe for the communities.
All right, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy, we move on to Public Safety, Trustee White.
Thank you, I move to accept a quote from JS Communications Technologies LLC to make necessary repairs to the three outdoor warning sirens.
Sorry.
Discussion on that. Mayor, can you, yeah, I was just going to ask you.
Currently, there's, these three sirens are in dire need of maintenance. We, they're very old sirens, we did determine, thanks to.
I thought one was working and two were not, or do we have four of them?
One's working.
One is, one is fully functional.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is, we did find a company that can re-manufacture the circuit boards, which have gone bad, invite please jump in and taste the, I misspeak. But we did find someone that can re-manufacture those, those boards to get them fully functional at the cost, at the cost of.
So the 300.
So the 300.
Where are all three located? One's on Main Street.
Eighth and Whitney, or eighth and then fourth and Madison.
They're all facing different ways.
Great.
Yep.
Okay.
I do feel it's a small price to pay for making those operable again.
After what happened to White and Azul.
I think you have our residents, I mean, it's just.
It's taken a long time to get them operational. It's already one been working, two haven't, or many years. Good. Any other impressions, comments?
And just, just ahead, we're going to continue to maintain these sirens once, once they're repaired.
Just hope the circuit boards hold up. All right, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Trustee White, we move on to Public Works and Recreation, Trustee Maribel.
I make a motion for the, to accept the approval of a complete concrete sidewalk curbing approach, including ADA plates. 800 Geddes Avenue ordered to the lowest quote, which is Whittington Rand Construction Company not to exceed $13,050.
Okay. Discussion on that.
We've had this, Tim wasn't here tonight, but I talked to him, so it's been on the books. We've been kicking the can on this, but we wanted to wait till our, our asphalt projects were done, we knew we had to do it. The reason for the more expensive costs of the ADA plates, so now when you redo anything, you have to add that just because it's a product of code and specs, so we're doing that. And it's very, very well needed, as Tim put it, it's been overdue. And we're trying, it'll be our project for this year and we'll move along. A lot of them we can do ourselves, this one was so expensive, couldn't handle to do it ourselves, so that's why, it's a far talent.
Yeah, Tim and I have a common.
We try to do everything ourselves lately, but just something like this, we need to have done by the professionals.
Thank you. Any other questions, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I made a motion to approve the request for approval to go with Third Millennium for the printing and mailing of the monthly water and sewer bills.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that?
Just to add on, you know, I'm one of those, I don't, I'm always hesitant to move to newer things, which I apologize for, I know it's going to be beneficial. The way that it was explained, I mean, the current ones are postcards, they get lost a lot. Residents complain about it, that they get lost a lot, there's not a lot of information on them. With this new one, it's going to be an actual mailing, which now we can, Tim can mail some of our water stuff in with it, which David has told me, and it's an actual mailing, which is going to be bigger.
Need to have part of that.
Yeah, we're going to show more information. It's going to show like previous month's bills, so you can compare. That way you can see like when people get water losses, unless you keep that, which I never do, I come down and I put and I, but it's something now that we'll have, it'll keep you up to date if you're not good, stuff like that, like this. I think it's beneficial. I was against it, but like I said, I always, but it's going to be better. Like I say always, we're evolving and it's part that I got to get sometimes, we need to evolve for all things.
In all fairness to you, when there's an additional cost that we're accustomed to, it's scary.
Yes.
So there is a small additional cost to this one, it does make us think, but I think overall it's going to be very beneficial.
I agree. Great, thank you, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Trustee Maribel. We move on to public comments, any guy would like to address the board, we just asked you to provide us with your, your name and your address.
Whitmore.
All right, we have no one, we move on to unfinished business, I'll start down with Trustee Whitmore.
Yes, I'm really excited for this weekend, Saturday we do have Rumble in the harbor. There's been quite a few individuals who have been very involved, we meet about once a week, once every other week, just to go over our menu ideas and really try to make this a unique event in the harbor. So we're going to have all new food, obviously this is quite a new event for us, as well as drinks and just a lot of new and exciting things. So we're very excited about that, again, that's this weekend, on Saturday. Then we also have the carnival coming up, the weekend of September 12th. And then also which we are going to be introducing a couple of new things to that as well. Trivia through Harbor Brewery, Slough and yoga, Sunday morning, so a couple of new features to the carnival as well. And then we also have Truck or Treat on October 21st. I do want to just do a big shout out to Public Works, especially for the vehicle maintenance program. That's been a huge success, I think we're saving quite a bit of money doing a lot of it in-house when we can. And I just want to definitely give them quite a bit of gratitude there.
Thank you, Trustee Whitmore. That's great, I agree with that, but in-house, you know, maintenance, in-house a lot of it, so. Trustee Brayden?
I just want to thank the department head for all the reports that were given. They love how articulate we are and how knowledgeable we are about anything that's happened to the village. And I'm just going to say, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Brayden, Trustee McCarthy.
Just want to mention, since the board has been so supportive of the Razz-It-Dazzles, Twirling Core, I've just mentioned that they brought on two gold medals from the world competition in Liverpool last week. So yeah, so between the two years, they've taken three gold medal stones.
What an amazing group.
Yep. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy, Trustee White.
Thank you, I have nothing, but I have one question for Trustee McCarthy. Are you ready for the Rumble in the harbor?
I am, I have front row tickets. Oh, yeah?
No, I thought you were going to be in the ring.
I've been pumping up, yeah. I saw my picture. I do have front row seats.
Okay, thank you, Trustee White, Trustee Levin. Trustee Maribel?
I just want to say, touch the truck event, it went off well, it's good weather. And I know I'm copying on all the emails for the Rumble, I'm participating as much as I should have, but I'm sure it's well taken care of because I see everything that's going on and they've been working really hard to promote it. Individuals like Lana said, I'm not going to mention their names, but there's groups that know who they are. They're working hard on the menu, like they said, it's a brand new menu for us, we're trying new things. They're going to work out the bugs, I think it's going to be a very event for the village, just because it's new, something we've never done. Other than that, school's starting soon, so just watch the traffic. These kids that cross 9th Street, you know, our big school gets out, I get off at that time, so. Come across 9th Street, they don't use the crossway, I mean, their kids, they're coming out of school, they're coming over. Some of them come to get their siblings at the little schools, so hate to say it and be unfair, but summer's coming to an end when school starts, so just be aware that school's starting, watch our traffic on 9th Street.
Thank you, Trustee Maribel. All right, next item, any other motions to share?
Move.
Okay.
Roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribel?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.